Turned over to Brett and Stephen to get us kicked off tonight. But the whole workshop tonight is designed to have a lot of dialogue. I know you're eating, but he can talk if he can. I know that that's really around the problem, but we love it because we want to make sure we have some great robust conversations here. And we are finalizing the plans for improvement moving forward.
Thanks Matt, Stephen and I are here tonight. We're honored to get to share this information and have the conversation with you as we roll forward with our work priorities around that. As you know, today, tonight, we're about trying to elaborately review some longitudinal outcomes. And look at our planning and improvement efforts. This calls very squarely first priority of the board, which is access. So if you notice what I was there. Tonight, here are our objectives. We're going to do a data walk, even though it's actually going to be less of a walk and more of a sit. So we're going to take a sit we're going to start with tonight. Because your data actually is at your tables. And we're going to end up walking at the end and I'll explain why at how in a second. Then we'll discuss the strategies and consider feedback that we have around what we think makes sense. As strategy, we love to know where, what are we missing? Where are our blind spots? What do you see that we need to fill in? And then we'll talk some current highlights and next steps. So you're in four groups right now. And whenever Stephen and team tried to get the stuff up on the walls, he realized he was too teeny tiny. And you're eating. And so we thought it might be a whole lot easier to just do this exercise at your tables. And so you've got every table has a packet of data from students. So in the middle of the table, somebody can grab that. We'll see that you have overall social studies. We've got science. We have reading. We have math here on this table. So your task is to take a look at that data and have a conversation around patterns that you notice? Things that you see that jump out to you? Where do you see growth? Where do you see gaps? Where do you see gaps widening? Where do you see gaps shrinking? Any of those kinds of things. You're going to record that on your big giant sticky note that everybody has you. Then after, we'll kind of pay attention to it. We'll between 15 minutes or so. We'll put those up around the walls and then we'll come and have a conversation, share out with everyone about what your team found. And so honestly, that's the exercise tonight. Primary thing is going through the data, recording your thoughts. What are the things that you're noticing? And then we'll share that out. Stephen, what am I missing? That's it. That's it. Step one. Step one is this part. So ready to go? Yes. Good job. Thanks. All right, here's your task. Super simple step next is just to take your tiny sticky note. And if y'all stickers on the wall there, put all the stuff over here on that glass. Reading LA there and over here very, very good for math. You're going to stay with that table. Everybody, go over to your group's sticky note. This will be the way to rub it. Do your own group sticky notes. Yep. Sticky sticky note. Wow. Exactly. Exactly. It's called wayfinding. So go over to your group sticky note. Take a quick look at it. Because here's what we're about to do. We're about to rotate and look at other groups' findings, which are in different academic areas. But I want you to look for trends that you noticed that we're seeing kind of across the district in different areas. Things that are different in different areas. And if there's any overlap in all that. If you're putting event diagrams together between social studies and math, are there things that are similar or not? And we're going to have, this is going to be a pretty quick exercise. We're going to spend about 90 seconds per chart. And we're going to rotate clockwise. And so everybody, take a look at your chart and rotate clockwise. Let me tell you, going this way. Going this way. Everybody going this way? Good work, everyone. If you could, just stay where you are and turn and face this direction. You could. So what did you notice? What did you notice similarities wise? What did you notice that stood out to you? What concerns jumped down at you? Or what celebrations did you see? Come back.
I'll start.
Start with A.
On social studies and on science at least was noted that there is a significant gap, a positive gap between eighth grade assessments and the 10th grade EOCs. So that's interesting that I heard the social studies group, eighth grade is US history, 10th grade is US history. They are different tests, but like the percentages on the 10th grade EOC are significantly higher for every category. And apparently that's the same in science.
Okay, same in science. What else we see?
Third grade reading improved in our one class. And that was really enlightening to see because in all three areas, approaches needs masters. We improved from 24 to 25 for third grade reading. So I really feel like that's going to do wonders for our kids' masters on this test, but in life. And one concern that I had was every chart paper, it's like that group expressed the same thing, gaps widening. In a lot of areas, our approaches is going down, but needs and masters is going up. And so we're seeing gaps widening in different contexts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. What else? What else you notice?
Our math scores are not only stagnant, they're decreasing in most areas.
So significance started in math overall.
And it is not by demographic. It looks like it's a district-wide issue. So when you look at it that way, then it makes you wonder. It's not just a school or a population. There's something at the root.
Okay, thank you. Another one. One more. Something from our science group. Prefer from everywhere, somebody from everyone. Just a general thing.
Increases in science across every performance level, across fifth, eighth, and biology from 24 to 25.
And that's unique for science, right?
Yep, just from 23 to 24, we saw a drop and a lot of increase everywhere.
Okay, so what you just did is spent some time just orienting yourself to what are some of the trends that we see in the district as we work through our data? And you noticed some things like you mentioned Brooklyn that are, they are happening all across the district and it's not really demographic based. There's something there that's happening that we have to think about. And then you also noticed some spikes in some areas where there are success. You called out two very specific ones around science and social studies. And there are some root reasons of why that's the case, even in terms of the way those assessments are actually scored. One thing we did talk about a little bit over here in reading was yes, the third grade went up. Then how do you address the primary grade, which still persists as a need in the system? So what I'm asking you is high five your friends or you go back to your table and we're going to talk about what we.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't. I don't understand what you're commenting there, the approaches of the point.
So the needs to master is basically the same here.
So one of the things we wanted to share with you a little bit is like what we're doing as a school system to really focus in on our strategies. To try to address some of the gaps that you're talking about. So you often will hear this kind of language at the campus level in terms of setting goals and targets. This year at the district level, not only will we have targets that are allocated by the board in the district improvement plan, but individual departments are also having department improvement plans that are directly related to the priorities that the board has established. And we're integrating four big ideas or the four disciplines of execution that come out of Kelly's work into our thinking. And what I just want to orient this to you real quick to give you a sense about how the district is operating in response to some of the data that you saw. So the first thing is every department and campus, they were adopting something called wildly important goals. We call them WIGs, not PIGs, which are very important goals. And basically is how do you take the priority work and elevate the most important thing to focus on to move the needle for kids? And once you identify the most important work, how do you figure out what your lead measures are going to be? What are the actions that you're actually going to take and measure to make sure that the needle is moving towards the direction it needs to? To improve the outcomes that you're talking about that are related to the WIGs? And then finally, creating a, what we call a compelling scoreboard. So each department and campus will have what we call compelling scoreboards. And think of it almost like a dashboard. When you're on, you're in a car and you're traveling somewhere, you look at your dashboard and that dashboard gives you specific data to tell you how you're doing. You look at your speed. You look to see if you're gas, do you have gas in your car? It's the same kind of concept as a scoreboard. How do you as a department, how do you as a school, have something that's simple for you to look at on a routine basis to tell you, are you on track to meeting your targets? Or are there adjustments that are needed along the way in terms of the actions you're taking? And then finally, creating a case of accountability. And what that, what we're basically referring to that is if you think about the district improvement plan is divided into quarters. Well, on a monthly basis, as a school system, we're reviewing, where are we with our WIGs? Where are we with our need measures? How are we making the adjustments that we need to along the way? So by the time we get to the end of this time next year, we can report different outcomes to the board than what you see even today. So why do I share all that with you? Because this, what you're about to, the activity you're about to go into now informs what you actually create for WIGs. So in your tables, on in your folders, I'm going to pop yours real quick. We're providing you with a draft copy of the goal and the strategies that are, you're going to see eventually in the district improvement plan. So coming up in a future board meeting, as a board, you'll be adopting performance objectives. The draft performance objectives that we're ideating around are sitting here as well as the strategy and the actions that we're going to take. What your activity is, is we'd like you as a table to, each of you look at a copy of the ones that are related to your content area. So if you were the reading table, you just oriented yourself to some data. And then the question is, so what are you going to do about it? This is what we're planning to do about it. And then on your, in your document, what you're looking at, you each have a thought catcher. One person at your table is going to capture the ideas that are discussed. So what we want you to think about is what strategies are here resonate with you? Like what squares with you? Like this strategy seems like it's on point. Which, is there something that you are looking at from a different angle that you want us to consider? And then the very last thing on the bottom, we would like the board to share with us. What are your wondering through recommendations? Is there something that you think we might not, we might be missing that we should think about differently? And then we're going to collect all these for you at the end as we inform our final copy that we're going to then share with you later on down the road. So Sarah, can you share out if that's what we're going to do?
Yes, sir. So we're going to look at the districts created goals that align with the content area we just analyzed data for.
Yes.
Then, once we are familiar with that, we're going to capture our thoughts in our thought catcher and add the lingering questions or recommendations we have.
Yes, and how many will these be produced for each table?
One.
Perfect.
All right, Stephen, can I add one thing? Trustees, this is maybe a step you haven't had in the past. I'm not positive, but this is where we're asking for your input before we get to final district improvement plan draft and stuff. So make sure your voice is heard. Those things that resonate with you, the questions that you have. This gives us good information because we have groups that are still working on this at the end. And this gives us good information before we finalize our plan.
And Sarah says she's going to write a lot. We encourage you all to do that. All right, so we're going to get you, let's say it's, how about we spend about 10 minutes on this? Or so, I'll check in with you and after 10 minutes, if we need a little more time, we'll take a couple of minutes. And then we're going to share with you some highlights of things that have already started, just some of the things going on. All right, so we'll check back in in about 5:50. Okay, this is what we're going to do. So just to bring, like you all had some really interesting conversations after you've had a chance to look at the draft district improvement plan. The important thing that you can remember around it is, it's exactly what Dr. Smith said earlier, it's a draft. So there's still, there's still work to be done. We're still refining lead measures. We're still refining strategies. This is your opportunity for us to hear from the board specifically around things you want us to consider. So what we're going to do is just share out. And what, we're going to just go around the room. And then you'll have one person at your table to share out quickly. What's one thing that squared with you? And either a wondering that you still have or something you want us to consider from a different angle. So one of those two things. There's two comments. Something that squared with you and either a wondering or something you want to consider a different angle. And we'll start with this table over here.
So something that squared with us is just the, you know, the task that's in front of us in the.
Social studies, by the way.
In the, yeah, social studies. And that we actually have five PL days built in now to actually accomplish these things that relate to work. Something that we, we've wondered about several things. To just pick one is, you know, we have these tools that we wanted to see kids consistently using in classrooms. Visual student journal, academic discourse, among other things. And to what extent are those tools already integrated in curriculum docs and teachers are using to teach with? That's the easiest way to shift teacher.
Thank you. All right, we're going to jump to this table on the back.
Okay, so we had science. We said that something that squared with us, actually Stephen helped make it squared for us. What is that understanding? That the change in the science teaks and the strategies that teachers need and students need to master is the mining and the training that we're going to provide is going to align for that star success. So ensure that the students get that through the PDE and critical. So that was helpful for us. We're going to cheat until you do.
Okay.
But two wonderings we had, one was, we can't tell in here, how will we measure the impact of the PDE outside of curriculum assessments and benchmarks? That actually shows a change in practice and teacher pedagogy.
We're going to talk about that next year, queuing us up.
Okay, and then our second one, which may not be in this year, but we're expecting results in training of one cohort grade level of teachers while the content students are responsible for mastering comes from other grades.
Yeah, well, that's very, that's a very good point. Yes. All right, Sarah, your table.
Okay, area of strength. We love that the strategies and the goals are invested in our people. So as a system, we can really see specifically strategy number one, how the grant that we've gotten for early literacy, we're not just going to serve 19 campuses with grant money. However, that we're going to have our literacy team kind of learn from that and take from that and then bring it to.